Thank you for having Father, thank you for today. Thank you for keeping us safe as last week. We're just so thankful that we could have graduation and that graduation was a very successful celebration for our seniors. Or just be with Thierry yet as she's recovering, be with her parents and the doctors. We're just so thankful that we have good news for her. Lord, just be with us tonight as we are making plans to add on to our facilities and if we're making plans for already talking about this fall. Just be with us that we can have another in-person year and that the kids are enjoying their summer vacation and I hope and pray that the staff is enjoying the vacation also. Lord be with us as we make the decisions that we need to this evening and guide us as we go home in your name we pray. Amen. This time I would like to open the South Adams School Board of Trustees Tuesday, June 8th, 2021 at 6:00 p.m. At this time we would stand and make the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming to see Peter. This time I would entertain a call.
Okay, when your name's called, just please signify that you are here. John Buckingham.
Here.
John Mann.
Here.
Our Lain Amstons.
Here.
Mitch Spurrier.
Here.
Adam Lehman.
Here.
Kyle Lowyler.
Here.
And Laiman Patterson present.
Thank you. This time I'll read a couple of core values. Our mission statement is inspiring students to reach for the stars. And with our core values, we believe in the value of personnel who are student-centered, highly trained, use effective methods, reflect personal integrity, work as a team, and model the importance of lifelong learning. Another one is that we believe responsible stewardship of the school's resources is a necessity to support long-term effective educational opportunities. At this time, on the agenda is the approval of the May 11 minutes.
I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes for the prior meeting.
Second.
It's been a motion a second to approve the minutes from May 11. All in favor, yea or nay? Start with John.
Yea.
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 Thank you. Next is the approval of the claims.
Did you?
Yeah, Vicki's here tonight. In your packet you had claims and financial information up to the date the packet went out. And like Vicki explained last time, she'll always make sure to update to date the actual business that's taken place through today. So you have that copy in front of you and she's just going to go over a couple of things.
So if you have any questions, let me know. Basically, you know, my first month I was learning this system. So still learning some, but I think we've got this pretty up to date as to any claims or any vouchers they call them. And I think everything's up to date. To date?
Today.
Today. So we're processing checks and ready to go out. If anybody has any questions, please let me know. I know that you got this updated list today. So it's kind of, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
And you'll notice our payrolls were extreme. We had an extreme payroll, we called it, as we went like that to push the button because we paid out the stipends and the stipends happened to fall also with the ECA pay at the same time. So it's quite a chunk.
All those things, you know, inflate your taxes and all those things. We spent a lot of money.
Well, we appreciate your credit, you give hearing. If anybody has any questions tomorrow or the next day, you're available, right?
Sure, sure. Always ask.
But thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims as submitted.
Second. It's been a motion a second to approve the claims as submitted. All in favor, yea or nay?
Yea.
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 Motion is carried. Next is the reports. The first one is athletic athletics.
I've got Jason here tonight. He's going to do a couple of things for us. He's going to talk a little bit about our change to our policy with our full criminal history for all coaches and then just give us an update on spring sports and anything else he wants to share.
Absolutely. So Michelle and I communicated with each other for a while about the background checks that we have done for coaches up to this point. Typically, when Scott was superintendent, those coaches, if you were a volunteer, went through what we have as our limited background check, which basically they submitted their driver's license number, their date of birth and so forth. And then the central office would run those through for us. But we're going to change that starting with the fall going forward. And anyone now who, whether they are a paid coach or whether they are a volunteer coach, will now go through the full criminal background check that all school employees use on, you know, whenever we hire them, whether it's custodians or teachers or what that entails, you know, just add another level of protection to the students and to the athletes that we have out there and knowing who we have working with our kids. So the fall coaches that were submitted, you know, those are all kind of under the idea now of, as we've changed this policy, of getting them to that point with the background check. Some of those were able to get those completed in time for this board meeting with a quick turnaround from when we made that decision to when Michelle had to have everything in the board packet. Not all of them were able to get those submitted in and then have them done in time for tonight's board meeting. But that is how we're kind of proceeding with those coaches moving forward, the change there. The spring sports season was very successful. We have had a very good run really for the last about five years with athletics. And spring continues to kind of be one of those seasons that kind of leads us with that. We had baseball, girls' track win conference championships for us. Softball was able to kind of bounce back from a little bit of an adjustment period at different points in the season to start kind of playing. Their best baseball at the end, or excuse me, their best softball at the end of the year, like you like to see, and were able to win sectional for us and make it to regional. And we ended up having six individuals compete at the state track meet last weekend, including Braden Bixler, who ended up placing sixth at the state meet in the 300-meter hurdles. Our boys four-by-four hundred relay team ended up placing 11th, so they missed the podium by a little bit, but it was the best race they've ran in their life. And it was very exciting. Yeah, you know, so that was pretty good.
And I want to say this about track, just for the record. You know, we have class basketball, we have class football, we have class sports, but track, there are sports that aren't classed in every kid in the whole entire state of Indiana. So they take 27 in each event. And so just to be one of the top 27 in the entire state, not classed, anything, is a huge deal.
Going into the track meet for the boys, they send out the lists of basically who the 27 are who qualified. And I joked with people with Braden's. Braden going into the meet was seated fourth. Like I said, he finished sixth, but he went in fourth. The first place kid was from Brownsburg, the second place kid was from Carmel, the third place kid was from Carmel, and then there's Braden in fourth. So I made that joke of which one of these, you know, doesn't really fall. You know, so for a kid, you know, from a school of under 400 kids to be in there and, you know, go in fourth and finish sixth, that's an extremely, extremely good accomplishment for him. We're pretty excited with that. And like I said, even with the four-by-four relay team, even though they did not make the podium, they were close. We thought for a second at the conclusion that they made it and then found out that they didn't. But just to watch them compete on that stage and, like we said, beat their best time by two seconds in the state meet was very exciting. So that concludes our spring sports. You know, those two events were our last two. Summer sports are already way underway, so there's really no break for any of those athletes. And, you know, we will go ahead and continue with the fall when we get there in August.
And Brooklyn Bixler's sister, Earl, missed the podium by 200.
Hundreds of seconds, yeah. I forgot about the group.
Yeah. So, yeah. So exciting times. Anybody have any questions about the background check change? We will be reimbursing our volunteer coaches. We certainly don't want anybody to pay to work here. And we're appreciative that they are doing that. But it adds that DCS level of investigation and some other levels that the limited does not that we feel is really important. So that is, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Jason sent a very detailed informational email out to the coaches to let them know the process and we're making that change. And most of them jumped right on it.
Do we need to make a motion to approve that officially or not?
We don't. We are looking at our policy because it doesn't really state either way. So we'll address that in our policy. But thanks for asking that.
Thank you, Jason. Any update? Next is technology.
Two quick updates. The smart boards arrived and they are set up in classrooms, but they except now too. But our vendor came through with the dates and everything they promised to. So we're pleased with them. They'll be back on July 7th for teacher training. We have 21 teachers signed up. And any teacher that couldn't attend, Alyssa and Kent will be our main trainers in the hall for our teachers. The next item is summer projects. We had two, what I call, major projects left for 2021, and that was replacing our VMware server and storage in the machine trades classroom. And we just got those items ordered this last week. They're supposed to be in within a couple of weeks and Nathan will get those projects done in July. So that's on those projects.
Yep, and we're going, I told them we'd go ahead and do the donation, the obsolete.
Right, yep. And that was the next thing that I was going to bring up to you. Alyssa's done a great job in getting the iPads along with the student workers, getting all the cards done. They're finishing up this week. So yes, we are looking for a home for all of our former MacBooks and iPads. We would propose that you designate them as obsolete with the direction that we could donate to those that would affect our students, like Boys and Girls Club, reach out to the libraries, those that support e-learning days for our students. Landon asked about maybe youth leagues donating to them. And I think in that case, that's affecting our students. So giving us, rather than go line by line, I didn't reach out to the Boys and Girls Club yet or the libraries because I didn't know what direction we would go, but I would reach out to them. And then beyond that, we would entertain that we would seek proposals from buyback companies and see what would best benefit us. I do want to make you aware, just days ago, I learned a program and I shared it with Michelle, and it is from one of the vendors that we highly trust. We've used them a lot this last year. They're out of Indianapolis. They do iPad repairs, various services, but they also buy back. And they are wanting to add an additional layer to their business and they're piloting it with Warsaw. And they said they'd be willing to pilot it with us if we're interested. And it's still a buyback program. They would buy the equipment back from us. And then if we want, we can choose, they're calling it the community buyback program, they will sell the equipment to whoever we designate, whether it would be staff, staff and students, or community, anyone. And you can limit how, I mean, there's all different options that you can choose. But long story short, it would be a way for us to offer it for sale, that is our equipment. And we would get 75% of the buyback cost versus 100%. So it would work. We would not be the sellers. It would strictly belong to them. The purchases would go through them. It would have to be an online purchase and it would have to go through them. They couldn't drop off payments to the school. And the portal could only be open for two weeks. So there's a few more details that I can share with you about that program.
But the first step is deeming them obsolete so all of those options for the devices can be implemented. And then as they're implemented, Meyer will come back and report on which ones we're doing. But we first want to be able to donate to the agencies in the area, community pieces that support our kids and our families. And in order to do that, we have to have a motion and a review to deem them obsolete.
So technically, it's kind of like selling it or they buying all of it back to begin with, and then they turn around and that leaves us with no liability then for any of them.
I foresee we would still field some questions and things like that, but we would just
answer those questions.
We would sell all of the, if they can't sell all of them, that's on them.
Right, they take all of the equipment. Right, that is correct. And I'll mention, we're keeping a small portion of it. We're going to use a few MacBooks for sublumines and things like that. But the majority of our equipment, we're looking at either donating or the buyback program.
So how many MacBooks do you have that would?
We have 60 and we're thinking we are, you would, I don't know, if we keep a few, I don't know how that falls as far as designating obsolete or not. But we are thinking that we would have 45 to dispose of.
And there's so much work that goes into just getting those ready to go, to be bought back, to be donated, to the organization, the inventory, that it has been a tremendous amount of work. So thank you to you and your team.
And we still will, regardless of what we do with them, we'll have to remove them from our inventory. But what I like about this particular vendor is they have a flat fee. We don't have to remove labels. We don't get deemed if not all the chargers are back. They'll take them out of the cases. They just, they'll make it easy for us. If we do straight buyback, there's other places out there that would probably give us a little bit more, but then they kind of categorize and get deemed. So that's, we would look closely at those proposals.
So the ones we deem obsolete, how do we do, if she wants to keep a few of them, how do we?
It's probably easiest to do the motion as to what she deems obsolete after retaining whatever.
Do you want a certain number?
I can give you a certain number. We would say 45 MacBooks and a state number would be 650 iPads.
So you already identified what's obsolete.
They're actually all considered obsolete. We've refreshed them. And personally, that's, I'm a little leery about selling a four-year-old plus, you know, because I know it's not going to be long to be four, it's going to be totally obsolete. But we would hope if we went the route of this vendor offering them for sale, hopefully Myers would be aware of that.
And because there's such a distance between now and the next board meeting to be able to move forward, we thought it's safer to go this route and then.
So we need a motion for obsolete? And then do we need a motion? That's all?
That's all, yep.
Okay.
And then we'll report back what we do with which amount. Because even though they're obsolete, like she said, some will be donated and some will be sold back. And then we'll have record of how many and what companies or organizations we donated. And we may even choose to, because they're obsolete, keep a few back for incidental donation as we had over this past year. We realized we needed to have some to donate and we, that would allow us to do that too, but they wouldn't be used within our population.
I'll make a motion to approve the designation of surplus of the equipment as requested.
Second.
It's been a motion a second to dispose of the extra technology, however many of numbers. All in favor, yea or nay? John?
Yea.
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 Motion is carried. Anything else?
Okay.
Thank you. Next is an update on the facilities.
I can't see them.
Yeah, no, you're right. He was here.
Happy report. We have one project that's went on without any complications from COVID. And we got the stadium lights all put in. We got those done in May. All new LED, pretty much what everybody's gone through, a real quality light. We had 12 fixtures to every post, which was 48 fixtures, and we went down to six fixtures to 24. So that reduced us about 34,000 watts out there, which is a nice significant decrease in power consumption. So I was real happy that project went well, but the negative is there's not enough burn time out there to get any payback on any of the lost boards.
Energy savings.
Yes. So you gotta have, you know, eight, 10 hours in the football field. This doesn't get no hours. Like there's no rebate to come back. If we could have showed eight, 10 hours a day out there, we could have had about $7,000 back. So I tried and they tried.
I think John wants night lights out there.
John's happy because they're flat now.
I'm waiting to see.
That's $1.53 a year, so we spend on that. So that project went real well. Got the gym floor going right now, so that was a week late and they're tearing it out. So that'll run a little later than we thought, but have a week tearing it out. And I think the maple's supposed to come in a week or two. If it doesn't, they're going to start to grade or refurbish. The door replacement, we're doing that. We've got mechanical room doors and music door. That's the last of the new doors in the school, so that started today. So I got windows, probably in July sometime. We're still building those, so that's yet to come. I got the fire alarm panel phase one still to finish up. They're coming back tomorrow. Phase two will be later and that's adding the new devices that we talked about. Getting the cafeteria and auditorium sounds or projector upgrade, that's coming here in June 14th. We're going to start on that, so that's still coming this way. And the last item that has the middle school locker rooms are getting painted.
Woo-hoo.
So get them refreshed. We did the gym a couple of years ago, I think now. So that all is going on, so.
I just have to say this, like as I'm listing all these things and PSI is here and so much talk of construction, last, I don't know the month, it was sometime, Dave and I met, we refined, worked through the budget, what we were going to actually do this year. And Dave sat down, had his list and detailed it and made sure he was ordering on top of things and we're getting things in. And so many schools are not. They're just running into walls because they waited and they didn't have it ordered. And he's able to click through this because of his planning and his follow-through and so thank you. That is a big, big deal right now because it's a school and to have those things ready to go and put it in the summer is a huge deal. So thank you for that.
One other thing I got, we did have an issue in the mechanic room. We've got, of course, I think most of you know, we've got two chillers, one's air-cooled, one's water-cooled. There's condensing pumps that pumps water out to the cooling tower and back. There's two of them and they oscillate back and forth. One of those burnt out, shaft broken too. So I'm looking in the, you know, the chiller I put in 20 years ago, it kind of seems funny to me because I don't realize it's that old of a piece of equipment. So and it's due for some $50,000 to $70,000 rebuild. And I got this pump that's $15,000 and that's not insulation. So what I'm going to do now is sit back, look at this and see how big this building expansion is, the time to upgrade that to a newer unit or put the money into that one. So in a month or two, we'll probably have an answer for that. I can run the way it is now, it'll run on one pump until it burns out, but I don't plan on that happening. But we do have the other chiller, so I don't even run that train of chiller in the summertime when the kids are here. It takes an 85-degree day and all the kids here to run both of them at 80% of the load or so. So we're good as far as that goes until I make a decision, you know, what this building project's going to look like. So I just want to keep you informed that there's some money we're going to be spending out there, whether it's rebuild our old system or replace it if we've got more cooling capacity that we've got to deal with. So that's all I have.
Dave, I just have one question. On the old gym floor, what are you doing with the old floor? Just ditching it?
I'm sorry, what?
The gym floor that you're tearing out? What are, somebody asked me.
Yeah, it's just going to dumpsters. If anybody wants it, be careful, just don't get any nails in your foot.
It would have been a whole other cross level too. I think Dave checked into that, to remove it, to be able to utilize it for donation or sell.
Yeah, the price, the price I agreed to was going in there and turned out like they're good and not saving anything because then, of course, there would have been more, so that's how we.
Right, right. And to recoup the extra expense.
So that's why we did it that way. But yeah, I thought, I'm sorry, I might have just gotten it made by one of you, but yeah. They're also having a hard time getting some of the boards up and those boards are kind of cracking on the sides of them and kind of splintering a little bit too. So it would have been quite a process. They're all in broken, as were in years past, I think. So I think it was a good choice to replace the floor. I'm really glad we made that choice and thanks to you for agreeing with that. And we'll get that project done out of here in a little month or so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, next on the agenda is safety and security.
Yeah, we don't really have a whole bunch of updates from last time. We've got some things down in the agenda that Earl's here for us crossing guard and so we'll skip that one and wait.
Under old business then, the first one is intense intervention prep time adjustments.
Yeah, we've talked a couple of times at our meetings about our intense intervention and we were able to increase some wages for our assistants in that room. And over the course of the year, there have been discussions related to the teachers in that room not getting their allocated prep time. And for various reasons, from staffing issues to be able to staff the room adequately between COVID and other absent reasons and also duties that are related specifically to our intense intervention and special ed teachers, these in particular. And the result of that and investigating that, looking at our contract, talking to our attorney, and meeting with our teachers association, it became clear that we needed to pay those, both of those teachers for their lost prep time that they didn't have. And the calculation for each of those was in your packet, but how we handle that is we pay, if we, if teachers teach through their prep time with their students or have duties assigned through their prep time, they are to get their hourly rate, which we calculate on six hours a day. So we took those ladies' salaries and did those calculations and I'm asking for approval to pay each of those ladies that prep for the entire school year. And it's just for the, it's just retroactive, it's just retro to last year. We would only make that decision moving forward if we had reason to. And we're addressing this issue so that these ladies will have their prep time in the future. Special ed teachers, as we talked about before, same as our special ed aides, there are some additional responsibilities related to compliance and funding and things that have to be done by the teacher legally. And that often takes time that they don't necessarily have during the day. And if they use their prep time to complete those things, case conferences, IEPs, online reporting, they often don't get time to prep for their, for their classes. So that's why I'm making that recommendation. I'd be happy to answer any questions about that.
So are the funds to pay for this COVID cares eligible?
No, these are just regular education funds. It could fit into that because part of it was staffing and you're allowed to supplement with that, but because this is addressing what I would shoot, that something related
So any better questions for that there? Or I would entertain a motion, so be.
I'll make a motion that we approve the additional pay for the lost prep time.
Second.
It's been a motion a second to approve the additional funding for prep time that was lost. All in favor, yea or nay? John?
Yea.
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 Motion is carried. Next on the agenda is BPA additional days for 2021/22.
I think this is the third time we've talked about this in our meeting. I think this is the third time we've talked about this in our meeting. We have a new CTE ECA. So it's a career technical ed extracurricular club that we have that we started a couple of years ago that has become extremely popular with the kids and it's been extremely successful. So when that was started, we set aside the smallest stipend amount for that, which is $272 in our ECA. And as the last couple of years have rolled out, the number of hours dedicated to this has far exceeded $272. So we began to investigate the actual time spent, other schools, how they pay their ECA, BPA, and looking at how we handle that same thing in our own district. So I asked the sponsor of our BPA for the last two years to document the days and the hours and the time that they spent, which he did. We actually had kids go to Nationals this year. Last year, COVID slowed them down, but we did get our competitions in, just didn't get to continue that past their state competition. So the days and hours that were turned in equated to about 12 additional days if you took the hours to the time. But about six or seven of those were in postseason competition, if you will. It was pass, it was regional, state, and then Nationals. So we don't typically pay a coach for postseason success. We didn't pair football coaches any different to go that many more weeks in the season postseason. It's just a set amount. So taking that into consideration, really having no guidance from our contract, but wanting to compensate this person for the amount of time, I'm recommending an additional five days of pay. Because I looked at the work leading up to that first competition and the first competition that would be everybody attends. And I came up with about a little over five days. So that would equate to $1,167 of one time. This will go back to negotiations to discuss and determine where it might fit in the, in the ECA scale or how it will look for compensation next year. So that dollar amount is proportionate to the person doing it. It could be different if it was five, but it was a different teacher. This is this teacher's hourly rate for five, or daily rate for five days. That's how I came up with that. I'd be happy to answer any questions about that. And I do have the documentation and details for, for the time spent.
So is the school year correct here? Is it 21, 22, or 2021?
Oh, I'm, no, it must, is it say 21, 22? It's only 2021. Thanks for catching that. It's only the 20, oh, said it right in the document, said it wrong on the agenda.
Right, your agenda's not right. So it'd be that pay for the teacher?
Yes. And like I said, only leading up to the first competition and the first one, not, not after that. Didn't mean I'd include those.
I make a motion that we pay the sponsor for BPA the five days that he is due.
Second.
Just gonna motion a second to pay the additional five days for the BPA. Coach, all in favor, yea or nay?
Yea.
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 Motion is carried. Next on the agenda is return to school plan.
Yeah.
Discussion?
It's just a discussion. So if I show this to the team, sometimes it makes them go like that as much time as he spent last summer. This is our back-to-school plan that is posted on our website, which is by law passed to be there, that we've worked on last summer, presented for discussion in June and approved in July last year. All of this relates to the CDC and state health guidance as it states throughout this document. I've gone through here, noted areas based on the meetings I've been able to attend. And we will, in the next couple of weeks, go through this to adjust what can be adjusted for our school for reopening. The federal government requires a reopening plan to be able to get your S R funds. And since we did that way back, there are some schools that didn't open this year in the country. And so those schools had to do this process and get it up by June 30th. We've already done that. But we wanna be able to address it as we move forward for next school year with any changing guidance. Technically, we're still under a health emergency in Indiana. And because of that, we are under that till June 30th, we won't make any changes to this document till the July board meeting. And we have an admin director meeting and a couple of other meetings where we reviewed, will review again and create new guidance to send out for your review. And we'll continue to watch what happens after June 30th and what that means for us. The things that I anticipate shifting would be the mask mandates. As the governor has said, those are lifting. But again, I can say that today and as we learned last year, in a couple of weeks, anything can change. And we'll do our best to keep up on everything that's a requirement and review it and hopefully have something to review for sure in, in July and approve. But if, depending on the guidance, it may be as late as August. But since we start school August 10th, we hope to have something approved for them. And we may need a special meeting like we did last year. So I just wanted to bring that and ask if anybody had it in your packet. Does anybody have any specific concerns that I can note as we begin to have the discussion? We don't plan to change anything related to our employment of custodial staff in this document at all. It is clear in the guidance that we continue with our FTE in the areas that we adjusted for COVID. Because of the extra funds, it's important enough for the federal government to say those need to stay in place. So the cleaning things, they may be adjusted for things that we've learned this year, but they won't be any less this year. Feel free to reach out if you have any questions as you look through this in the next coming weeks. And I'll keep you updated as far as meetings go and invite you to attend. Yes, I'm so excited.
Next is new business. The first one is textbook adoption.
Yes, you should have in your packets one textbook for adoption this particular month. It is fire and rescue. We needed to update this curriculum so that Jason can stay current with the tests that he needs to give to, give his students for certification. So this does that for us, it has an online component as well. So it's a good curriculum to be able to continue to do fire rescue one and fire rescue two. So that will be for both classes. Any questions? We're just asking for approval for that particular piece.
The state hasn't changed the age where kids can become firemen. 18 is to 21.
It was try, I will look because there was some legislation that was moving through to change it to 18. And I don't know if that passed or not. It isn't something we would get sent to us because they don't see it as a school legislative issue. But we can check on that because.
I was just curious because I knew it was a discussion thing.
Right, and we've asked for that as, as school people because the reason she's asking is our kids go through fire and rescue and get certified, but they can't be a fireman until they're 21.
Right.
So that is not always convenient for those kiddos.
No.
Yeah.
Just need approval.
Sure.
Yep. Fire rescue, so moved.
Second.
Just gonna motion a second to approve the textbook adoption for fire and rescue one and two. Yea or nay, John?
Yea.
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 Motion is carried. Next is textbook fees.
Me again. You've got textbook fees in front of you. Good news, we've sustained relatively steady and just a few minor bumps here and there. But everything's really, what we had last year was essentially pretty much the same process here. So I can feel any specific questions you might have about these.
So is there any one that took a huge jump or they're just pretty much all the same? Pretty much same?
They were within a few dollars, come, a couple came down.
Yeah, a few dollars. We actually had a couple that actually went down a few cents, so.
And there's a lot of work, Mayor Haley spends tons of time on this. Principals spend time, we met, it is a big, heavy lift.
And this probably does not include like the CTA costs and everything.
It does.
Okay, because was it that last year?
Yeah, we had it, yeah. And technically, because this is being approved, we'll have to adjust a couple on here. But yeah, pretty close to all of them this time. We did, we had to wait twice last year, you're right. So we need a motion to approve those two.
I move to approve the textbook fees for the next school year.
Second.
Just gonna motion a second to approve the textbook fees. Yea or nay, John?
Yea.
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 Motion is carried. Next is our resolution approval for this school crossing guard.
I have Earl here tonight, and Earl has done an amazing job, always staying on top of how to keep us legal. And earlier, before even Earl knew, we had talked about what kind of approval do we need for the crossing guard to have authority in the street? You know, to make them stop. So Earl's set to do some research. And what you have in front of you is just for your information, basically. We have to show in our minutes that you're aware and he'll do a little bit of explaining about that resolution. And go ahead.
For a crossing guard in the state of Indiana, there has to be, to utilize a crossing guard on a city street or any kind of highway, anything like that, that jurisdiction has to have that person approved through their Board of Public Works and safety, whether it be a jurisdiction one put like hours in City of Bern, the Board of Works, county, either, city safety people, they would have to approve that as well. The area that we utilize the crossing guard is on Parkway Street. So therefore, we have to go to the city and ask them to grant us the appointment of crossing guard. So basically, what I did is I contacted the mayor. Mayor jumped on the right way, got Dave, got everything written up. So that way, we can actually have a crossing guard out there on the streets. If you, there was some questions before about using, where we were exempt of having a crossing guard. That'd be if we have a crossing guard doing something on property. That is where she, at this point, she, Carol, wouldn't have to be going through the Board of Works for it. But since we have her, Joe, and myself getting involved, which I have to do it. But, but Joe and Jeff, they're the three that will do it if I'm not out there or Carol is not out there. So we went to the city and asked for those three to be appointed as a crossing guard through the Board of Public Works.
So this is just kind of information acknowledging that we discussed it. And thank you for doing that. I've been in a school where they ran into some trouble because that wasn't, that didn't happen, so. Thanks.
Motion to approve him to keep going?
Yep.
Thanks, Earl.
Thank you.
And that is on the agenda for the next board meeting, so.
Perfect.
Thank you, Earl.
And we'll get a copy of that once they sign it and keep it.
Sorry, I need to make an adjustment here on the new business. I was using a different, forgot about. PSI here with one proposer. One proposer resolution. We'll entertain that one now. We'll go back to the other agenda here in a minute.
And that, this is a little bit trickier. So this is based on, the one proposer is we had an RFQ out. We approved a project at our last board meeting to start to investigate a project, which started with the RFQ project, process. Then we had a TRC meeting, we approved a TRC committee, had a meeting and submitted, put out an RFQ, which is a request for qualifications for people to be able to bid on our request for proposals. So a lot of RFs in there. And what happened as a result of that during our period of time, we had about six inquiries to our technical team related to the request for qualifications, but only one fully completed the process of the request for qualifications. And that was PSI. And they're here tonight to answer any questions that we have and kind of talk about some things. The benefit of only having one proposer is it expedites the process of the TRC and moves things along a little bit quicker. So tonight, in order to accept just that one proposer and move through the process a little quicker, Dan Rollins has provided for us a resolution that we need to sign and approve tonight, establishing one proposer to let us move forward. I will let these guys, if you wanna add anything to that right now, that would be helpful, that'd be great.
Yeah, what we'll do is, since we've responded, we, we will still go out and finish design, go out and get competitive bids on all cost components, review them with the school, school makes selection, much as we've done on the previous five projects that we've been fortunate to work with you on. So that would be the next steps. Given the current market conditions, as Dave and others here know, if we wanna get, if you wanna get some of this work done for the start of school in the 2022, 23 season, those classroom additions, we have a very tight window. We're looking at six to eight months for steel. And so we need to get the critical projects that you want done, design, review, approve, get steel out, get pricing going. It's, it's just the way the market is right now. So it is good that we're able to move at a quicker pace because we probably need to get design approval probably in that August timeframe for at least some component of the work that you want have ready for the start of school. But we are very excited and we have put a lot of effort into this and have a pretty good feel where we're going on a significant portion of it. Obviously, we'll need to have additional meetings on some areas that have not finalized design. But on the classroom additions, I think those are, we should be able to move through it pretty quickly.
So our TRC meeting is scheduled for Thursday, the 10th at 1:30. So that'll have a different lens than we had planned on originally because of this resolution if it's approved tonight. And I will say too, today, spent a lot of time in meetings about S R. We did submit our S R three application. Thank you, Joe. Met about that and crafted words to show our true intent, that everything we're doing, we believe, is, is about our student outcomes, improving student outcomes. It isn't just a construction grant by any means. It is definitely a grant to support teachers and students and families. And we'll wait, we'll wait on that. This is kind of weird, like we said. We're going through this process before we have approval to do the process from the federal government side of things. So the training, the meeting today was encouraging as to how we wrote it and what we said. I'm, I have no reason to believe it won't be approved. But we've got our work cut out for us in the next couple of weeks to expedite that process so that we can get those, those orders in place. Some schools shared today that in their regular planned already involved going projects, they've gotten word of six-month and nine-month and one-year delays, which is tremendously impactful to trying to have a school year, have spaces for kids. And it was, it seemed like there must have been mobile classroom vendors watching that as well because we immediately started getting emails from mobile classroom vendors more than we usually do. So we will need a motion to approve this resolution in order to move forward with the expedited process. Yes?
One last thing, the school is not committing to any dollars by approving this. So there's no commitment to dollars until the design and price and contracts have been approved.
Thank you for saying that. He hears me say that. So this is, we're not committing any dollars, right? So this is, he's probably really tired of hearing me say that.
We've said it quite a few times.
I know.
I make a motion, we approve this resolution?
Second.
Just gonna motion a second to approve the one proposer resolution. Yea or nay, John?
Yea.
Yea.
Yay.
Yay?
Yay.
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 Motion is carried. Thank you. We'll be seeing somebody Thursday.
That's right.
Maybe all of you.
Yeah.
Maybe the whole team. Uh, next on the agenda is resolution to transfer funds.
Okay, this is an inter-fund transfer resolution that we do every year as we get ready to move into budget season and some things come in. And the, the, this resolution simply states that it is permission throughout the next period of time to move money from rainy day to another education or some other fund back and forth as we want to make sure that we have the money where it needs to be. All of it has to be recorded, documented, and replaced from where it came from. And it isn't that, it's something we approved last year, but we didn't utilize. I can't speak to it in the years before then. But in talking with Vicki, she doesn't see any reason that we'll do that this year. But she said, since it's something we've done, and we did learn about it today as well, that it's something that we want to do as we move into the budget season. So it's just approving the ability to move funds temporarily and moving them back. So we just need a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion that we approve the inter-fund transfer resolution. Second.
Just put a motion as second to approve the inter-transfer resolution, inter-transfer fund resolution, too many words. Yay or nay, John?
Yay.
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 Yay?
Yay.
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 Motion is carried. Now we'll go back to appoint the SEBT representative.
Yes, SEBT. So Pam Hawbaker has graciously been doing this for the last couple of years. And you, you can only speak in meetings if you are appointed trustee by your board. We have Rebecca Daly is our appointed school teacher representative, and Pam's been that. But Pam would very much like to hand the baton to me, and it is difficult for me in the meetings not to say anything, okay? So this won't take place and start till, till July, so she will finish out. She'll, they're all laughing. I would start, if you approve me as that representative, I would start in being able to attend those meetings freely in July. So we need a motion to appoint me as the SEBT Corporation Representative, Administrative Representative.
So moved.
Second.
Just put a motion as second to appoint Shelley as SEBT Representative. Yay or nay, John?
Yay.
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 Yay?
Yay.
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 Motion is carried. Congratulations. We're gonna go one more meeting.
We get to talk.
I do. I didn't know. I've been tagging in the chat all the time the first time, and then I didn't know, you're not supposed to. Okay, sorry. Questions? So now I just text Brad Yates and he asks him for me, so.
Maybe that's still good.
I know. It'll work for June, right?
Yep. Next on the agenda is the 21-22 Camp Freezenwald dates.
Yeah, so Shelley has submitted those dates for Camp Freezenwald, and it is a tremendous opportunity. If you want to say anything about how it went this year?
Yeah, we had a great time. We did not get to swim the night this year, but we were just very thankful we got to go. We had our, my fifth grade teachers, I have to say thank you a million times to them. I think they were gone like six days total. I mean, they took fifth grade girls one day, fifth grade boys one day, sixth grade, I mean, they were, they were in the classroom a lot. But I think everybody had a great time. On the second day, since we didn't swim the night, we visited a different park in Marion, in Charlo Park. And so that was a fun experience as well. The kids got to experience rock climbing. They climbed the rock wall. They went down the zip line. So we're hopeful that we get to go in September and swim the night and kind of get back on schedule. Everybody's caught up now. Our fifth and sixth graders were able to go, so, yeah, so we're hoping for that. We've never gone in September, and there's a possibility we'll get to swim in the lake because it could be still warm enough early September, so I'm excited about that, too.
So the dates are September 8th to the 10th, so we just need approval for that moving forward, and hoping we don't have to change that. Don't worry.
I make a motion that we approve the Camp Freezenwald trip, camping trip in September.
Second.
Just put a motion as second to approve the Freezenwald camping trip. John? Yay or nay?
Yay.
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 Yay?
Yay.
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 Motion is carried. Have a good time doing fall instead of spring, huh?
Yeah, it'll be nice.
It could be cold, too.
It could be. You never know.
Uh, next on the agenda is the overnight out-of-state requests for the 21-22 school year.
Okay, Jason's here, and what he has put together, he, this is a regular thing we do every year to approve the overnight field trips out of state for the entire year. The reason we do it this way is because in seasons, we don't always have board meetings in time to approve when we know someone's going to qualify for something and have to go overnight. So a few years back, the board asked, could we just do this all at once? And so Jason has come this time of the year, for the last few years, and get permission for all of these specific dates.
I'll make a motion that we approve the out-of-state or, or field trips for the upcoming school year.
Second.
Just put a motion as second to approve the overnight out-of-state requests for the 21-22 school year. John, yay or nay?
Yay.
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 Yay?
Yeah.
Yay.
Yay.
Motion is carried. Have fun getting, I hope they all win and have to go overnight.
We'll be panhandling on the street if that happens.
There's a lot goes into those.
Yeah. So I, 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 I told Arlene tonight, we, in your packet, you have an amazing attempt by Casey to keep, have everything in there of our employments and what's happened in the last week. Because it's the end of the year, the year getting ready for next school year, our principals and our directors have done a great job of looking at staffing, thinking about what we need, reorganizing. Joe's got a document we look at and we move around. And so I made a cheat sheet to step through, most of which all you have in your packet. And I'm going to read through my cheat sheet, but it might not follow exactly what's in your packet. And I'm going to start with resignations because some of the resignations are being filled tonight, so I don't want to hire somebody before we resign them, and so, and that doesn't typically happen, but, and we have a lot of transfer rounds, which I'm so thankful because it's allowing our people to expand the number of hours they work or move into a position that suits them better. So with your permission, I'm going to start with resignations, and I'll read through those and answer questions and seek approval, and then move on to, down the list. Is that okay to go? Okay. So I'm going to start with resignations tonight. And tonight we have Jared Whitty, who's been an intense intervention assistant in our II room, done an amazing job. We're so thankful to have Jared. But he is going on to do some other things educationally, so he is resigning tonight, and we will be bringing his replacement tonight as well. Tricia Mosher, I'm bringing her resignation as well. She has been a kindergarten aide for us, and she's doing her student teaching in the fall. So she can't do both at the same time, so she is having to resign her kindergarten aide position. Terry Stury, who's been on leave for us but been a bus driver, is making the choice to officially resign tonight. We also have Jessica Gentis, who has been our assistant cafeteria director in charge of mealtime, and she is resigning tonight. And then one that surprised us in our office, Annette Schwartz, who's been with us for ten and a half years, is our payroll and executive assistant, is resigning to take a, a position in the field of entitlement work. So those are the resignations I have, unless Casey's going to remind me of one I forgot, which she might do that tonight. And I would need approval for those resignations.
I'll make a motion that we approve the resignations as, as stated.
Second.
Just put a motion as second to approve the resignations. Do we really have to?
I know.
Okay. John, yay or nay?
Yay.
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 Yay?
Yeah.
Yay.
Yay.
Motion is carried.
And I'm thankful for each of those people. We don't often do that as much with resignations, but I'm so thankful for people who are willing to be part of our family. And I know when they choose to leave, it's what's best for them, but we'll miss them. New employees. I'm going to start with that. Carol Hoffman resigned, retired from our corporation a couple of board meetings ago, and we interviewed for that position. And Abby is recommending one of our current employees in the cafeteria, Nancy Sprunger, to take the head cook controller position. Also recommending Jody Baumann as a part-time in the cafeteria. And I hope I'm going to say your name right. Peggy Winjet, or, yep. So as part-time worker in the cafeteria. So those are cafeteria approvals that I'm seeking tonight. And then also Belinda, how do you say her last name? Gell?
Gell.
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 Gell, okay.
Gell.
Gell.
It's just like it, Gell.
Yep.
Uh, for pre-K assistant. And Kelly Amstets, for, as a pre-K assistant. And as a recess aide, Megan Page. So I'm going to keep those together because there's some adjustments over here for the next, there's still new employees, but maybe some transfers, too. So I would ask for approval for those that I just read as new employees.
So moved. Second.
Just put a motion as second to approve the new employees that were read. John, yay or nay?
Yay.
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 Yay?
Yeah.
Yay.
Yay.
Motion is carried.
Great. So our II room had some resignations tonight and in the past few months, and we've had those positions posted and worked, like I said, to move some things around. So we've had a sub in that room who's done a great job for us named Melissa Ashley, and she is a new employee. I'm recommending to move from that sub position into a 29-hour position in the Intense Intervention Room. And Abril Ellis is already employed for us down in the elementary in the afternoon, and she is going to take the 20-hour II position that we have posted. So we're thankful for that. And then Maggie Killsby, who's been in the Intense Intervention Room in a part-time status, is moving to a full-time status. And she actually was working right at the end of the year as well in a different position in the II room. So this is her, technically, her third shift before we've even approved her in the position. So ultimately, though, now she's, we're asking for approval for her to be a full-time in the Intense Intervention Room. And the last one in the Intense Intervention Room is Sandy Sutton, and she's moving from part-time in the Intense Intervention Room to full-time in the Intense Intervention Room. And I am very thankful to say that I think this is the first time the entire year, and I know we're not in session, that we've had a full staff in that Intense Intervention Room. So I'm very thankful for that. So with those new slash transfer and additions, I would seek approval for those as I read them. And those are all in your packet, but it's not necessarily in that order with all that information.
Shall move.
Second.
Just put a motion as second to approve the additional employees. John, yay or nay?
Yay.
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 Yay?
Yeah.
Yay.
Yeah.
Motion is carried.
Okay. So I'm going to do fall coaches now, since Jason is here, and the fall coaches we talked about earlier. You have the list of those in your packet with background checks intact to what we were requiring and most to the next level. So I would need a, a motion for approval of our fall coaches.
I'll make a motion that we approve our 2021 fall coaches. Second.
Just put a motion as second to approve the fall coaches. John, yay or nay?
Yay.
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 Yay?
Yeah.
Yay.
Yay.
Motion is carried.
Okay. Now I have a request for a leave of absence. Jeff Brett Miller is a sixth grade math teacher with us, and his wife is taking a teaching position at Emory University, and he wishes to go with her to do that next year. He's not planning to sign a teaching contract and would like to exercise his right for a year's leave of absence.
Make a motion, we approve that leave of absence as requested. Second.
Just put a motion as second to approve the leave of absence for Jeff Brett Miller. John?
Yay.
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 Yay?
Yeah.
Yay.
Yeah.
Motion is carried.
And I have one more. It is a retirement of Ron Yoder. Ron has been with us as a bus driver and working in the bus garage for 22 years, so thanks to him. His, he is currently out on FMLA, but Will Knopf has decided not to return from that. So his last official day will be July 2nd, and we're thankful that he has given so much. He loves, he's having a hard time, missing it already, and we'll miss him for sure. So we have every reason to believe he'll be back in chatting on occasion. Mark has already kind of seen that, right, Dave? So we do need to approve Ron's retirement.
Make an approve, uh, motion that we approve Ron Yoder's retirement.
Second.
Motion as second to approve Ron Yoder's retirement. John?
Yay.
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 Yay?
Yeah.
Yay.
Yeah.
Motion is carried.
Casey, am I good?
Next is a donation.
Yeah, we have a donation that we get yearly, so Jean House Foundation, to our machine trades. Super extremely generous. It's gone up every year since, in the last three years that I, I looked back on. And it really makes a lot of amazing things possible for our kiddos. This year, um, last year was $7,500. This year is $10,000 donation from, yeah, from the Jean House Foundation. So, um, you know, I just am amazed at the generosity that every board meeting we have, we have something like this to present, and I'm so thankful. So we do need to accept that donation, and I know that Jared and his kiddos benefit from this greatly and make things possible that wouldn't otherwise be possible.
I make a motion, we accept this donation from Jean House Foundation.
Second.
Just put a motion as second to approve the donation of $10,000 to machine trades. John?
Yay.
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 Yay?
Yay.
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 Motion is carried. All the donations.
Yep.
Okay, employees. Next is other.
Well, I have another. Tiara, I talked to her mom today, and Tiara's our student who was injured in a car accident the Friday before graduation. And she wrote "Mom" today on a paper, and she's continuing to improve every day. She has a road ahead of her, and her mom and dad would appreciate all the prayers they can get. But I was thrilled to hear that today, and she's kind of taken a couple steps forward and a step back, and mom really felt good today. And I asked mom how she was, and mom said, now that she's way better, I'm way better. You know, as parents, how that feels. So I'm thankful for that, and I wanted to make sure to update. Also, we have a TRC meeting on Thursday, like I mentioned, want to remind of that. And we do have a building corporation meeting at 5:00 on Thursday, which doesn't really involve anybody in this room, but it's our yearly requirement as we manage our lease rental bond from the new addition that we, or the upgrades that we did. Anybody else have another?
I have a thank you here to the South Adams School Board. Thank you for everything. I've enjoyed the 43 years teaching here at South Adams and touching the lives of so many students. Ginger Rushe, just send that.
She was thrilled about her bell that she received. She loved that, so.
And do we have to do something with the $5,700 check?
Oh, I just wanted to update you. The fifty, uh, last time we had lots of conversation and approved the ability for the county to utilize some of our ground for sewer project. After some conversations, we did decide to approve it with the promised adjustments in the document, which they presented to Arlene, and she signed. And as a result of that, they gave us a, a check for that amount, which was $5,700. And we do need to discuss at some point how we're going to, to handle those funds. And I wanted to share that one thing Arlene and I had discussed. We had Jesse O'Dell, some of our kids, if you've noticed, some of the landscaping on the one side of the building where the new cement had been. They completed that. They are looking around where else they can make some improvements as well. And then our kids in the fall are going to do some of that maintenance for that. So this money, we are receipting in based on our last board meeting that we signed. And so as we go through the time, as we utilize those funds and how to spend them, we'll bring that back to the board for approval.
Now, the $5,700, it has to technically, technically go back to the fund it was originated in, which would have been capital projects, correct?
Yes, that's typically where it would go back to the fund that it, it would fit into, even, so it's, it's above and beyond, but it can go into that, to the fund it belongs to, which is ground, land, so it's operations.
So we don't need a decision tonight as to?
We would just want to monitor it and say how we're using it once it's in that fund. Vicki, who's not here anymore, is looking at which fund it fits legally the best. Vicki, who's not here anymore, is looking at which fund it fits legally the best.
So if I have any great suggestions on utilizing $5,700? We may have more landscaping to do here in the future.
Yes.
Do we have any other?
Nope, I don't have any.
Guests of the board?
Do you have any guests of the board tonight?
Okay, with that comes adjournment.
May we adjourn?
Second.
Spin a motion a second for adjournment. Yay or nay, John?
Yay.
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 Yay. Adam?
Hey.
He's already out.
Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have an executive session with them.